Zoning Committee meeting to order for Wednesday, January tenth, two thousand and eighteen. With that, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Chairman Bray.
President.
Vice Chairman Barnes.
President.
Commissioner Steiner.
Present.
Commissioner Walters.
Present.
Commissioner Kish, Commissioner Maloney, and Commissioner Keys are all absent. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. With that, can I get a motion from one of my members to excuse those commissioners for tonight?
So moved.
It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Barnes, to excuse the following commissioners from this evening's meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Just a little bit of housekeeping, and to put this on the record, our bylaws state that we have to have a four-vote majority to pass anything tonight. So you'll see that we have four members present tonight. We are missing three, so we, all four of us, have to vote in favor of something to pass, otherwise it will fail according to bylaws. With that, we'll move on to the minutes from December sixth, two thousand and seventeen. Do I have a motion on those?
I make a motion that we pass the minutes from December of seventeen.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Barnes, to approve the minutes as distributed in our packets. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five is public comments. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission at this time on any non-agenda items? Do we have any slips for non-agenda items? All right. On to item number six. This is disclosure of ex parte communication. Does any commissioner member have any disclosures they'd like to bring up at this time?
No.
Seeing none, we will move on to item number seven. This is old business. At this time, this hearing was open at this time, and so we will go back to it. It was tabled from the December sixth meeting. This is the zoning ordinance text amendment revisions related to wireless communication facilities. And with that, I will ask Katie to come forward and present on that text amendment, please.
Thank you, Chairman. We do not have a presentation for you tonight. We're asking for continuance of this item once again, and it's just due to us not having it finalized. So we would ask that you would continue it to the February fourteenth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay, appreciate that. Is there, can I get a motion for that, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that that item seventeen-two-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-nine be continued to the next meeting.
Second.
Has been moved by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Steiner, to move the zoning ordinance text amendment to the February fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. I am going to take some latitude as the chairman this evening, and as long as my commissioners are okay with that, I would like to jump to item eight point four, the Montecito PAD Amendment, which is what I think everyone has joined us for. We're so thrilled that you guys are here tonight. We usually don't have anybody in the audience, so this is a great way to start the new year. We, just for those that have not been here, again, thank you for coming out and participating. Staff will present, will ask the applicant to present. We will open it up to comments from the public. At this time, I have a stack here in front of me, and we'll go through that stack. If you would like to speak this evening, you can go outside, and there are slips, or there are slips over here right in front of Heather, that you can fill out if you'd like to speak. Typically, we'd like you to keep your comments to the project. We don't allow you to ask questions of the applicant or anybody. We want just to hear your comments there. I know that several of you seem to have concerns with this. I'd also ask, for timing purposes, we all would like to return home to our families at some point tonight, that kind of condense your comments, and we don't repeat ourselves over and over again. So with that, I will open the public hearing on the Montecito PAD Amendment, and I'll ask Alex to present at this time.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interject just one second before Ms. Listensky makes her presentation, just for benefit of the audience and other interested parties, Ms. Listensky will make her presentation, then the applicant will come up and make a presentation, I believe. They'll be capped at ten minutes, and then speakers are capped at three minutes. So we'll be keeping time and give you like a minute or minute and a half courtesy kind of interruption, just to let you know that you may want to begin winding up your comments.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, thank you. This item is the Montecito PAD Amendment. Just a brief overview of the actual amendment tonight. In the Montecito planning area, there's approximately fourteen hundred acres. This amendment consists of about thirteen seventy-one of those acres, which I'll discuss why a portion was cut out. Five hundred and twenty-eight acres are already platted within the Montecito area, but they are included in this regulatory book, which we'll also break down for you. I'd like to start with a zoning history of the subject property. In nineteen eighty-eight, five hundred and four, or five thousand four hundred and ninety-three acres were zoned PAD with a mix of uses ranging from residential at different densities, commercial, office, all the likes that we'd like to see in those planned area developments. So that was the Estrella Phase Two PAD. In two thousand and four, the Villages Seven and Nine Amendment was adopted. This further determined land uses in the area. There were four types of residential land uses established, and these were based on density requirements. So looking at the list I provided on the screen, SFD is for single-family detached. There was single-family detached executive residential, which consisted of the lowest density with a zero-to-three range. PR was for primary residential, which was three to six dwelling units per acre. The CL designation was for a close lot, so a higher density with six to ten units per acre, or dwelling units per acre. And then multifamily, excuse me, multifamily district allowed for a density of ten or more dwelling units per acre, and allowed for stacked multifamily townhomes, apartments, condominiums. So not just limited to apartments. The amendment also created park spaces and designated two school sites. The Villages Seven and Nine, just for your reference, too, is seventy-six pages of PAD, which I'll compare as we move forward. In two thousand and eight, Newland came forward and proposed the Montecito Phase Three PAD Amendment. It was considered Phase Three because the areas in blue and yellow were Phases One and Two, so they were either platted, in development, or already being marketed on the site. And at this point, not everything was developed. For example, this map shows parcels seven point five and seven point one included in Phase One, but as we move forward, you'll see that there are some additional changes to these parcels, and one is being included in this amendment. So the entire area was rebranded as Montecito, and the two thousand and eight amendment was, like I said, called Montecito Phase Three. These exhibits are from the Montecito Phase Three PAD. The map on the left showed the existing land use from the Villages Seven and Nine Amendment. And the one on the right is the two thousand and eight proposed amendment. So this is how the land sits today. The red hashed area, which you can see up here, those were the areas that were already platted by the time the two thousand and eight amendment came forward. But other than that, you can see most of the areas under this curve, and then under what was formerly called Calistoga, or the continuation of Calistoga, and along Willis Road. That's where you'll see the most changes within the two thousand and eight amendment. The two thousand and eight amendment had five types of residential, so it pulled those single-family detached executive and primary residential districts into the new amendment. And then the close, the close lot district was converted to what they called a creative lot district. So that's what that CL in this version is. And it added multifamily standards, or updated the multifamily standards. So I just made those orange to distinguish the two. The amendment imposed several creative lot additional design guidelines, which was in that creative lot designation, and also reconfigured land use layout. This document is over seventy-five pages of PAD for regulation. Additional amendments we've seen over the years. In two thousand and three, an employment district was implemented at the south of the Montecito site. It's surrounding the wastewater treatment facility. In two thousand and fourteen, there was a density transfer and an update to some setbacks, which were in parcels nine point eight, nine point nine, and seven point one. And then in twenty-seven, or earlier, twenty seventeen, last year, there was also a density update to seven point five. In the summer of twenty seventeen, Newland came to the city with a proposal to update the development standards of the undeveloped areas of Montecito. And instead of adding another regulatory book, staff requested that the applicant created a single regulatory booklet that would combine all previous amendments into one book that was easier for staff to use, easier for the residents to find their development standards in one table. And also, in order to remain consistent with the city's development standards, staff recommended that standards be updated to regulate by lot dimensions rather than density. So this table shows the six residential districts that are included in this amendment. SFD, EX, and PR are pulled exactly from the two thousand and four PAD amendment, which you can see how it differs from the new districts as far as, these are regulated by density, and the rest are regulated by minimum lot widths and depths. And just as a point of clarification, these density regulations don't have, or never set a lot dimension minimum, so technically, these districts could have been building fifty-foot wide lots on every parcel as long as the density was being met. Therefore, in an effort for consistency and transparency, the updated districts designate a minimum standard now. Just like the city's standards, the minimum dimensions are just minimums, and do not mean that all parcels will be developed at those minimums. All right. This slide breaks down the areas of change specific to the updated residential districts. The areas that are not in the color consist of areas that have already been built, and those districts, like I mentioned, are not changing zoning districts or any development standards. As shown as the development standard table, their development standards will remain exactly the same. The amendment proposes sixteen parcels zone the new SFD sixty, which consists of about two hundred and sixty-five acres. That is the, I think it's this light pink or orange color, oh, I'm sorry, I think it's the yellow. One of those, too. I'm going a little colorblind right now. There are two parcels that are being proposed to rezone to single-family detached, attached, which is the SFDA, and those parcels are these orange pieces. There's one parcel being rezoned to the single-family detached court home, which is the seven point one parcel. Some additional changes within this amendment. The Business Park District, we've added a BP one district to utilize the city's I-one district as far as development regulations go. The original BP district was kept in the areas that are light purple, and this is because Newland does not own these parcels, so the development standards of those parcels will be guided by what was originally approved in the PAD. And in order to keep it into one single document, those standards were brought directly from the original PAD. One thing to note, due to reconfiguration of zoning districts, some of the parcel numbers have changed, so I'll try to be as clear as possible about which parcel I'm referring to as we move forward. Parcel nine point three-one in the new district. In the two thousand and eight amendment, this area was designated as a school site, and also was called parcel nine point two-four, if you look at the old version. Newland made Liberty School District aware of their intent to remove this school site on this parcel only. So in the narrative, there is a letter from the superintendent accepting the change to parcel nine point two-four, which, as I mentioned, will now be called parcel nine point three-one. We did send the application to the school districts for review, noting the change of the zoning, and there was no further opposition provided. On November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, Newland hosted a neighborhood meeting at Star Point Residence Club in order to give residents the opportunity to review the application and provide feedback. There were approximately eighty residents at this meeting, and staff captured the overview of the comments as follows. Parcel seven point one, there were concerns about the impact to the wash between seven point one and seven point two, which I'll go through all of these items following this slide. There was also concerns about the density and height of parcel seven point one. Parcel nine point seven, which is parcel nine point two-seven A, B, and C, which, like I said, I'll go through why there's two different parcel numbers there moving forward. There were concerns about the height of that parcel. The remaining school site and the removed school site were an issue as well for the residents. And the setback of the new homes, of any new homes in the future adjacent to existing lots with view fencing was also a concern that was brought up at the meeting. So just for a reference, I marked the areas of concern with blue stars, and I've captured those in the slides when I move forward discussing those. So on parcel seven point one, the first major concern brought up was the confusion regarding the wash between seven point one and seven point two. The map on the left is the first submittal that was provided to the residents for public review, and it did not show a brown line designating it as open space, which caused concern that the wash was being removed. So in today's proposal, it does include that open space layer. One thing to note, it does not show the specific scale or size of the wash. So during the plat review process, the size of the wash will be determined per city and state regulations regarding floodplains and other standards. So at this point, I don't know the specifics of that separation. I have asked the applicant to try to provide additional information to you tonight, so during his presentation, you might hear that answer. The other concerns brought up at that meeting were in regards to development regulations. The table on the left shows, provides a comparison of the existing standards versus the proposed standards. In regards to the maximum height of the parcel, the height is decreasing, the maximum height is decreasing by five feet. And as I mentioned earlier, the two thousand and eight amendment regulated the standards by density, so this new proposal is by minimum lot width and depth. The submittal published prior to the neighborhood meeting combined parcels nine point two-seven A, B, and C, which is what was published before the first neighborhood meeting. Excuse me. Due to the feedback at the neighborhood meeting, Newland has decided to remove this area from the application at this time. Therefore, the existing zoning will remain as is. So that current zoning within the Montecito PAD, the two thousand and eight version, does designate these for multifamily and the creative lot. Also, on the first submittal, the neighborhood park, which is designated by this first star, was removed. In order to, their first intent was to create a long, unique park, but due to neighborhood feedback, it was, it did make sense that, since this park was already designated, to leave it as is. So Newland replaced the park, removing it from any change in the amendment. And the second star is the original location of the school site. In order to maintain similar development standards as the original school development, Newland has imposed a requirement that this parcel shall be restricted to single-story homes, which is what this yellow asterisk designates in the regulatory standards book. The school site designated on parcel seven point one-three was already designated as a school site, one the districts originally signed off on the PAD, so no further concerns, so since no further concerns were brought up by school districts, no changes were made to this area. Many residents with view fences expressed concerns about where buildings can take place behind their lots with a view fence. This photo is a photo I received from a resident with a view fence, which was included in the correspondence received attachment part of your packet. The track sizes between parcels can vary during the plating process, but to ensure an absolute minimum separation between rear yards with view fences, Newland has included a footnote, footnote ten, in the development standards that says where view fencing is utilized, a minimum separation between two rear yards shall be forty feet. Like I said, this establishes a minimum, so in some areas, it might be greater than forty feet, but it won't be less than forty feet with this new regulation. As I did mention before, or I will mention now, there was an item in your packet with all of the residents' emails I've received, and a map of where those areas are. Due to additional questions and concerns received by staff and the applicant, Newland did host an additional neighborhood meeting to discuss the changes since the first meeting and clarify some of the items within the amendment. The meeting was held yesterday, January ninth, at the Star Point Residence Club. There were approximately forty people in attendance. The main area that was discussed in the meeting yesterday was the area south of nine point two-six. There were other concerns, but this is the one we heard the most about, and those concerns were related to height and density. One item to note is that, based on last night's discussions regarding height, the applicant is also including an update to the commercial development standards. The current standards are guided by the city's C-two general commercial district with a maximum height of fifty-six feet. In order to reduce the height of the development south of parcel nine point two-six, the applicant is proposing changing that maximum height to forty-five feet. Staff finds the amendment in conformance with the goals of the general plan, and the applicant has provided a mix of land uses and additional amenities as required by the PAD standards, and does a review of the, as written in the zoning ordinance. One item that I did want to mention, I heard that there was questions about the Loop 303 studies in coordination with ADOT, so I provided the link on the screen if anyone wants to write it down for reference. But this concludes my presentation, and after all the presentations, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. At this time, I will ask the applicant, Mr. Teiki, to come forward and present, and then I'll allow the commissioners to ask questions. Welcome, Pete, you know the drill.
Well, good evening, Commissioner and Commission members. Thanks for giving me some time tonight. Excuse me. I'm Alex Head, Alex Head, as Alex had mentioned, and one thing I wanted to mention real quick is, I do have the slides, I'm going to move through them pretty quickly to make sure I stand underneath the ten minutes, but if you have any questions, please just stop me. So as Alex had mentioned, we had a meeting last night. There was a follow-up meeting to our November fifteenth meeting. What you're looking at currently, I'm assuming this is on your screens?
Mm-hmm.
Great. So what you're looking at currently is the current zoning map. What I did was just noted the particular parcels that had the most concerns. There is a gentleman or a couple of homeowners that, all the way up in the top right, seven point two, that I believe are here as well, that had expressed concerns, as Alex had mentioned, on seven point one. To move this forward. Great. What you're looking at here is the current zoning development standard. So right now, you've got single-family CL, and the multifamily on the far rights, which are up to thirty-five feet for the CL, and then up to forty-five feet for the multifamily. What we're looking at here is, again, I've got all the parcels noted, the, starting at the top, what the, what you're looking at is the designation of the parcel and the height we're allowed to go to. So we've got the thirty-five, the forty-five for the multifamily, and then there's a CP, which is a community public facility of thirty-five feet, and you can see the commercial currently is at thirty-five feet. Here, what we're looking at is the amendment area we're requesting. So again, I had noted where the parcels are. One quick question, do I need to point out any roads? Is everyone comfortable, you know where this is at? Here, what we're looking at is the development standards that we're proposing. I did put in the red box the height again, because it seems to be the greatest area of concern. What we did was, you'll notice the areas that were multifamily are not in here because of the areas under the amendment only, not the areas that are not a part. We are removing the multifamily and putting in various other zonings. Here, what we're looking at is the map, so you will see, what I've done here is I have combined two parcels, there's two maps, so there's two parcels per map, otherwise I wouldn't be able to fit all the notes. So if you look at the Stone Canyon, which is parcel nine point two, you'll see the green line immediately to the east side. What we've done there and already have planned, approved plans for, is a twenty-five-five and fifty-eight-foot landscape track to separate those two parcels. The parcel nine point one plat was approved in October of two thousand and seventeen, so the plat is approved, and we are actually in the process of moving forward with construction right now. So what we're doing at this point is, we're coming in, and the amendment is solely for what you see in yellow. Those are some two thousand and eight standards that were implemented, they're fairly old and outdated, we feel, and what we're moving to is the current standards that fit the city's new zoning districts. So going back, we're going to move a little bit south, you're going to see the Medina parcel, parcel nine point two-six, so it's the parcel immediately to the west of the white, no longer a part. To the south of it, again, we've got a landscape buffer at this point. I know that it will be at least forty feet, but I have not determined it because I haven't planned the area yet, so I'm just stating that it will be at least forty feet when you move south of there. What I did on those blocks is, what is not in parentheses would be the existing zoning. So we have multifamily, single-family detached dash CL, we're changing it to single-family detached fifty. Based on the amendment, most of the area is going to go from forty-five-foot height to a thirty-foot height. When we move south of there, you're going to see there's two strips on each side of a green space. Those are currently multifamily and CP, so we're proposing to go to a single-family detached attached zoning, which, mending it goes from forty-five to forty feet. And of course, you see the green space, and as we keep moving around the bottom, the bottom is the commercial to commercial. So what we're doing is basically staying commercial, but we're updating to the more current standard. Current standard is fifty-six feet. In the past, it was less than that, and through discussions with planning, we had come to the terms of lowering it to forty-five feet as opposed to the sixty-six. We can move into the left, that is the single-family CL and multifamily, we're changing to single-family detached attached. So we're mending from thirty-five- So we're amending from 35 feet to 45 feet and 40 feet. Then, moving up, it's multifamily, or, multi, excuse me, multifamily again, we're changing to single-family detached 50, which we're going from 45 feet to 30 feet. So as you can see, the large majority of this is actually going down in height. We've already looked at that. Now we're going to look at the next two parcels, which are the Palazzo and Mirador. Those two parcels are the, the ones in yellow, the arrows go down there, they're kind of thin, so I hope you can see them. As Alex had mentioned, the park below the parcel 9.6, we originally were going to change the park to the piece next to it, make a linear park. We have made the decision to leave that as a park. Then to the, the piece to the right is a school site. What we had done was, probably a couple of years ago, we had, had a meeting with the city or with Liberty Elementary. They had, we had mentioned to them, they had the two schools, school sites here that were fairly close. They, we just sent it over to them, they took a look at it and said they did not need both. They made the decision to keep the site that is up there in blue, parcel 7.13. And then, as Alex mentioned, there is a letter we have on file from, from Liberty releasing the site, so we needed to rezone it. The proposed here was, because it was a school, schools don't tend to generally be extremely high. So what we did was we were requesting single-family 50, but we were stipulating it to a single-story that we think would basically match the height of the school. Right here is a map. A gentleman asked me last night, I didn't see him tonight, he is here, I brought him a copy of this, he asked me to put this map together to show the parcel to the left, what the zoning change, how far it creeps into that parcel. So in the middle is the split between parcel 9.5 and 9.6, 9.5 being on the right, 9.6 being on the left. So, so I told him I would have this map here, that is the map. Right here, we are looking at parcel 7.1. If you recall, that's the parcel up to the top where they were concerned about the wash. You'll see the wash on the top part of it. This parcel, what we had done was, back in February of 2014, went in and had amended the parcel from...
One minute.
Excuse me?
One minute.
148 lots to 71, we're requesting to increase it to, to 90, to a courtyard product. That's the layout for the courtyard product, that would be a street scene for it. The reason it's in, for the amendment, we currently fit the zoning, but if you'll notice down towards the bottom of this, there is a five-foot setback. That's what the amendment is for, is to reduce the setback so this can fit in. And the last one is the school site we already discussed, just showing you specifically what was released, what they kept. There's the letter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Teiki. At this time, Pete, if you'll stay close, and Alex, I want to go ahead and allow the commissioners to ask any questions if they have any questions, and then we'll move into comments. Is there any questions from any of the commissioners?
Not yet.
I'd just like to see this map stay up so we can...
Okay. I actually, the one question if someone could point out, so it seems that, as I've looked through a lot of these comments, Tacoma Road, if someone will point out exactly which parcel's up there, I know some is already in development, kind of point out where the Tacoma Road is exactly and where a lot of concerns we've heard from, just so I can get a bearing on the map, if either Pete or Alex want to point that out.
I'm offering that myself. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, oops. Tacoma Road is just north of this green line in parcel 9.26.
North of the green line, and then is it...
It runs parallel to the green line.
But there's no entrance there off of Willis, right? You have to come in...
No, the entrances to parcel 9.26 are off of, I, I don't, I think this is like 170 something. So there's 182, thank you. The entrance is, is from the west of this parcel, and then you can go through parcels 9.2, I believe.
And just quickly, Alex, can you identify which one of those, I know several of those are developed, but can you just point out, or is it the stuff that's outlined in black that's already developed?
These, the items outlined in black...
Are already developed.
Pretty much, um, yeah, the items outlined in black, making a little boundary.
That stuff to the north there.
Yeah, all of this north stuff, minus 7.5 is in development, 7.1 is part of the amendment, undeveloped currently. And I think that includes all that's developed.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of get my bearings a little better.
I have a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Walters.
Alex, I don't know if this is the right map to look at to answer this question, so feel free to change it if you need to. It sounds like there's been some changes from when discussion first started to where we are today. Can you tell me, as the proposal sits now, which parcels will, under the proposal, would result in a density increase, not height, but a density increase over what is currently zoned?
Thank you, Commissioner Walters. Pete can probably confirm this, but every parcel is being, since we're not, since we've removed that reg, density range regulation, or, yes, everything is decreasing for the most part, the size of the lots. I, I don't have the, the density studies, because those, when we review the plots, we'll get that information, but just based on size of lots, generally speaking, it's decreasing.
The courtyard product doesn't create an increase?
Based on the originals, or, original submittal, this area with the, with the detached attached, all of it was multifamily or create, single-family attached creative lot, which was higher density.
Okay, so the density issue that I'm reading about in the emails was primarily the tracks that had been removed from the proposal? The 9 point... No, then...
The track is the concern last night.
Oh, can you...
I want to hone in on where, under the current amendment as proposed tonight, what, what parcels would result in a density increase over what is currently zoned?
So the commissioners, thank you for the question. The concern that I heard last night, and I'm sure they'll expand on it when they get up here later, would be the two roughly rectangular pieces on each side of that green space?
Could you be more specific? Pete? Okay, the nine, the 9 point, it'd be 92...
929A and B.
29B and 29A?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those would be more dense?
Those would be, I wouldn't, I guess I don't have a good answer for you, because I'm not saying they would be more dense, because multifamily is one of the highest densities we have. So these are, are currently being zoned for a different type of product.
Chairman, if I may, I think one of the reasons we're having trouble is, as Alex said in her presentation, the original PAD didn't have lot standards. It had a density range. The majority of the areas adjacent to the existing residents allowed six to 10 dwelling units per acre. Those are really difficult, because you can play with density a lot by adding in a open space or not. And so the new PAD goes to the standards that are in the zoning ordinance by setting minimum lot standards. So it is a little hard to translate density to density. Basically, for, one thing I should mention, overall, for the whole development, the ordinance has a stipulation capping the maximum number of lots that can be built, and that is not increasing. So overall, there's not, they can, they're not increasing the maximum number of lots for Montecito. So that's number one. Number two is, most of the single-family parcels are roughly the same density as the single-family parcels that are in the new PAD. The biggest change is that there were parcels designated as multifamily, which allowed duplexes, townhomes, and apartments. And the new orange color that's called single-family detached attached allows townhomes or duplexes, but does not allow apartments.
Correct.
So, so there's not really a density translation necessarily, but the apartments has been removed as a use from those, from that single-family detached attached district. I hope that starts to answer the question, it's just a little difficult.
Can I ask for clarification?
Commissioner Barnes has a question.
So, before, we had apartments allowed in this area that we're talking about, and under the current, there is no apartments, no multifamily. Is that correct?
Thank you, Chairman. That is correct for the area that is under review tonight. Those three parcels, 9.27, A, B, and C, A and C are designated as multifamily, and those are not proposed for change tonight.
So they were multifamily and they're staying multifamily?
For right now, yes. But in this PAD before you, apartments is not listed as a permitted use. As you said, it's all what the city considers single-family, the city considers a duplex, a triplex, a townhome, as a single-family attached unit, because they'd be on individual lots. You know, there's some townhomes and duplex products that are considered multifamily because they're on an, on a single lot, but the ones proposed in this PAD would be individual ownership, if that makes sense.
Okay. I think it makes sense. I think probably some of the struggle we're having is because we just made all of those changes, and now we're conforming to what, what we made changes to, and now we're setting minimums rather than ranges, basically. Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners at this time? I think this is a good, oh, sorry, Commissioner Steiner, please.
One question. What is 9.34, Pete? And actually, 9.33 also.
Commissioners, thank you for the question, 9.34 and 9.33?
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to have to locate them.
34 is the, I'm sorry, and Pete, you can probably confirm this, but that's the water, water treatment.
Oh, that's the ways Rainbow Valley Water Campus and Wastewater Campus.
And then 33 was the proposed fire station that is not going to be there now?
Well, just to clarify, yes, but it is still a fire station property, it hasn't been changed.
And just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, if you can indulge me for a second, there's, there is going to be a new fire station in this geography of the city, off of Australia Parkway, just south of Willis Road. It's moving to the east and just slightly south. So there'll still be a new fire station that's constructed, constructed in this geography.
Any other questions at this time? None? Okay. With that, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of this. I ask that you keep your comments directly to the issue at hand. We do have a lot, and I want to make sure that we get everybody heard. Remember, there's three minutes that you're allowed. The, either Katie or Heather, someone will keep time, and they'll, they'll announce when you're getting close. After that, please forgive me some of these, if I mispronounce names, announce your name and your address when you come to the mic, and this is in no particular order tonight. Also, one thing I ask, just to be conscientious of time, is if you've heard a comment before, please, you know, don't come back up to repeat it. We, we've heard it and understood, and, and we want to keep this moving forward. So with that, I will ask Laura Robb, you are the first victim tonight.
I will start by saying, Michelle's question, I believe, my understanding is, I live on 7.2, which is the piece that we're talking about at the top there, and that is increasing from 71 lots to 90 lots, is my understanding. And it's a new court home product, you're reducing the setbacks, and it's a high-density neighborhood, new to, new concept, I guess. My concern is, I live along that wash, and I have seen the water come to the edge of my wall during a storm, and they have not designed that land to be center, the, the new division on the other side goes right up to the edge of the wash. If they provide you a satellite-type picture, not a drawing, you'll see that the, the distance is not nearly as much on the other side. And my question is, where's all that water going to run off to? It's going to go right into that wash. I mean, there's, there's no dirt left, it's five-foot setbacks all the way around. The other thing is traffic. You've got Bogan Villa Park, you've got a new neighborhood on the other side, and you've got a major intersection there, Calistoga, that feeds all of those other homes in there, and now you've got a high-density neighborhood right on that corner. So I, I wonder if studies have been done for the wash and for the traffic in that area. And I just had kind of an idea or a concept, is why, I know there's a lot of focus on the other area there, the family, multifamily. I don't think there'd be nearly as much contention if they chose a new location and allowed new homes later to build around those, instead of plopping multifamily dwellings when there's already single families around there. So I know, like in Verado, they built condos around a new pool there, and they sold like crazy, but people weren't, I don't think, as upset, because they didn't put them right next to nice, single-family homes. So, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I, I do appreciate everyone's enthusiasm, but if we can keep the clapping to a minimum, I would appreciate that. Frances Galey?
Yes.
First of all, I hope I got it right. Did I get it right?
I'm sorry, sir.
Last name, Galey?
Gallia.
Gallia, okay.
Thank you. I'm used to it being mispronounced. Good evening, everyone. My name is Frances Gallia. I live with my husband, Peter Gallia, at 18033 West Tacoma Road, along the south side of Medina, parcel 9.26. Basically, I'm going to read a letter that we sent to Alex Listinsky on January the 5th of this year, in regards to the Montecito zoning plan. While we understand and are very pleased that the amendment proposal removes and does not include multifamily land use, which is condos and apartments, we are not happy about the proposed SFD slash A land use for any parcel in the whole area south of our parcel 9.26. We see that SFD slash A can include duplexes and townhomes. We feel that this type of housing is more dense than we would like or agree to, and they are sometimes more than two stories. We want to see only one or two-story detached homes in all the housing parcels involved, preferably at the lowest density possible and comparable to 9.26 and the surrounding parcels. From what we can see, there is a total of 278 units proposed for the 40.6 acres slated for housing in the whole area south of our parcel 9.26. That equals approximately 80% more density than our parcel. To us, that is high density. This sort of development doesn't exist presently that we know of in the whole of Estrella, and we don't agree to having it here in the area south of our rear yard. More homes crammed in, more traffic, more pollution, more noise, et cetera, will greatly hurt the atmosphere of our community, and will be a detriment to the existing visual theme of Estrella. We respectfully ask that only one- or two-story, single-family detached homes be allowed in the whole area slated for residential development south of parcel 9.26, in order to continue with the same existing density and theme of Estrella. Additionally, we feel the minimum standard distance proposal of 40 feet open space between a rearview fence and another wall is inadequate. In our case, we ask for 100 feet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard Card.
Representing, Richard Card and Celesta Card, 18057 West Tacoma, we're neighbors. To the south of us, you're, they're proposing to build some structures that are pretty big. To the south of us, you're, they're proposing to build some structures that are pretty big, and I'm not going to get into the, the density of it. She did a great job with that. What I think you don't understand here is the topo on it, like the woman first tried to explain. You're looking at a map that is compressed. So if you look in my backyard and you look out, you'll see that it drops about 20 to 30 feet. Now, if you take a structure that's approximately 35 or 40 feet from that moving up, that's great. We can look out over that if you want to discuss view, okay? So now, what they're going to do and what they've been doing for the last five years is they've been adding fill to that. So that's going to come up. As that comes up, now a structure that's 40 feet is not 40 feet anymore. It's 60 feet. So to us, there's a little bit more to this. And you said I shouldn't discuss things other than, you know, what people have discussed. That I think people are missing here. You know, I guess you would be missing that because you don't really see it. So to us, we're gonna see an increase in traffic. We're gonna see low-rent homes, so to speak. We're gonna see crime increase. We're gonna see pollution. We're gonna see all of those things. And then the aesthetics part of it is, is another thing. And that's, so that's the functional part of it. Now comes the integrity part, where Mary Kay lied to all of us, that we ended up spending money on view fences and view, that we got roped into that. And they colluded with, with Newland, knowing that they were down the road gonna change this map. There are plenty of places to place this kind of, these kind of structures in, in our community. And to have it just dropped in our backyard, that, that to me is unacceptable. You know, I, I would, I would like to see single-family homes on that. So that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Richard. Tony Kundif?
Hi, my name's Tony Kundif. I reside at 14907 South 180th Avenue, which is in Stone Canyon, KB Homes. I purchased the, one of the largest lots with the best view. Again, like the gentleman talked about, with the view fencing in the back. I had spoken with KB Homes prior to purchasing the lot and also Newland, as far as the plans for 9.1. And based on what they had told me, that they were looking out 10 to 15 years before building that parcel, 9.1. I talked to Newland on five separate occasions, and again, got the same exact answer. Like the gentleman just talked about, I talked to KB Homes, and both lied to me. As I paid for a premium lot, and then I find out after finding out that there was plans to build on 9.1, they plan on putting two-story homes behind my house. At the time, based on the conversation I had with Pete, it was at 40 feet. And now it seems like it's at 55 to 58 feet. But still, we're talking about that elevation rise. Right now, it sits down probably 30 feet, and they're planning on raising that up another 20 to 30 feet to level it out at the street level. So that 30, 40, 50 feet, whatever the elevation is, is gonna rise behind my house. So that premium lot that I have is no longer a premium lot. It's because of KB Home and Newland lying to me about the premium lot. In addition to that, I, I think there's a number of people here in reference to the proposed school lot, or the zoned area for the school. Now, I know we had a discussion about this at one of the meetings. There's a major liability concern if you decide to approve that zoning for that school. Right now, I know the Presidio, the restaurant is closed down. But prior to that, the liquor license has been approved for that parcel. And I'm sure it'll be approved for it again once that opens up. You have to think about the liability that you place on yourselves, the city, Newland Homes, and everybody else. If somebody leaves that parcel on the Presidio and drives away there drunk and it hits one of those kids when that school opens, the liability is placed on you because you approved that zoning for that school. Not only you, but the school district and Newland Homes. I just want to make sure that a little common sense is coming to play here. And you think about that before you approve that, that zoning for that school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Joe Settle.
This will be kind of short because a lot of what I wanted to cover has been covered. My name's Joe Settle. I live at 17857 West Verden Road. On parcel 7.1, one of the major concerns, and she covered it a little bit a minute ago, but I, I'm retired, and I spend a lot of time walking my dog every morning. What was never meant to happen in that particular neighborhood was for a neighborhood street to turn into a major thoroughfare, which has happened. When they built the Presidio, and with the school where it's at, everyone uses coming up by Bougainvillea Park and then right through the neighborhoods to take their kids to school, to get back to the Presidio. It's, it's, it's constant, all day long. And I know it was never meant to be, but someone within the city or someone needs to look at that because it's a danger to the children in the area, et cetera, for the amount of traffic going through there. Number two is, you know, when you drive up to Australia, and that's the first thing that attracted me there seven years ago, it's a, it's a beautifully planned community of single-family residents. And like my predecessor, I also went down to the location by the lake, talked to him about what was planned, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And granted, there was multifamily designations on the original plot map many years ago. But when I talked to the people there, they said there is no plans to do multifamily residences. And with what they're planning on 7.1, that's just gonna add to the density change from what I call a single-family density homes into, I hate to use this term, but what they classify in San Francisco and other areas as a shotgun house. Because the lots are so small, your rooms line up this way because the house is not diversified enough to actually have a main floor, if you have a garage. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Kussler, please.
I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. My concern's about 7.1, and most of that stuff's already been discussed by Laura and the gentleman that came right before me. But something I want to talk about is that wash again and how that thing is offset. Living there and watching, watching that wash run during monsoon season and the water encroach on my property like it has, if they're allowed to build 7.1 like they want, they're actually gonna push that water because that, they don't have it centered over that wash and, and, you know, coming back enough. So they're gonna push that water more, and that water's gonna come over all our properties on that side, and we're gonna be flooded. I'm really worried about that. And I think that they should delay anything in that area for about maybe three years and do a study in that wash. Because I haven't seen any study, although I've asked for it. There's been no study presented. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Whitmark?
My name's Richard Whitmark. I live at 18117 West Tacoma, parcel, I think it's 9.26. And I'm one of the original owners out there. There were seven homes built at the time, 2011. Mary Kay told us, I had a different understanding than 100 feet. They told us it was gonna be less than, a little less than 500 feet at the next homes that were ever gonna be built. And we've lived out there all this time, and we have the view fence. And if they, we start putting taller things out there, we're gonna lose our, our view. And again, we paid a lot of money for our, that view lot. And we moved out there for this purpose, not to move to Verado where they're building multifamilies. We moved out here because it's secluded and it's a nice place to live. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Rominski?
Thank you. I'm not used to talking, so I, if you don't mind, I'm gonna read what I wrote down, if that's okay. All right. My name is Karen Rominski. My husband and I live at 13668, and that's 177th Avenue. Parcel 17, or 7.2 is the parcel that we live in. And I'm concerned about the parcel 7.1 over there. That's the parcel that overlook, or our parcel overlooks that one there. Before purchasing, we researched the area because this is our retirement home and we were wanting to stay for a long time. So even though we could, we always asked down there at the information center, we were never given any information about what that parcel was going to be. We researched it, however, and found out that it was slated for a single-family residential, single-family homes. And so, because the area was nice, we liked it there. We liked the way the houses looked. We liked the mountain views. We liked the wildlife. We went ahead and purchased it, paying extra for the lot. My concern isn't only for the view, though. My concern is to the devaluation of our properties and the traffic congestion. We looked at homes around the valley, and our search came across several courtyard layouts. We found those communities to be congested and unattractive. Had 7.1 bid zone for courtyard homes originally, we would not have chosen to purchase. Anyway, courtyard homes, what does that mean? It's a vague description. Are they single-story, two-story, three-story? The, the visual that they've showed is very nice. However, we have known that to be changed after some time, once it's approved. We don't know what that is. The community around Calistoga, which is the entrance off of Australia Parkway, is already showing signs of traffic congestion. It's turning east onto Calistoga from 178th Avenue. That's difficult right now. You've got children biking. You've got people walking to the Bougainvillea Park, which is right across from it. You have the Presidio, which people come down that way. You've got a lot of construction going on further up Calistago.
30 seconds. 30 seconds.
Okay. Anyway, that, my concern is the traffic. We've got the Presidio, a possible elementary school. We've got more construction up the hill. Bougainvillea Park is very well-used. There are a lot of traffic right there. It's already very difficult driving and walking. So mainly, that is my concern. Again, devaluation of property when you put in multi-value, multifamily, then you've got a devaluation of our property values. So thank you for listening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm probably gonna slaughter this next one, but Teri Mustin? Is it Teri?
You said it right.
Okay.
Thank you. I live at 15337 South 180th Avenue in parcel 2.6. And my concerns are, I, I think, I feel for you because the discussion from a developer is difficult when they're, they're going over these numbers and plaits, and we've changed this from 2008 to 2000 whatever. So it's confusing. So we're trying to make it simple. We'd like to have no multifamily dwellings in Estrella. It's a single-family. That's what the neighborhood is, a single-family. We all live away from a lot of amenities because we want to live out in the desert. We like the quiet. If we wanted to live in, you know, places where there's multifamilies, there's a lot of places you can. There's a lot of apartments in Avondale, Litchfield, Goodyear. They're very nice apartment complex. They're very large. They have a lot of amenities. There's no need for multifamily in Estrella, where I don't, just don't think it belongs. And I, my, my, my view would be that 9.1, 9.24, 9.25, 9.28, 9.29 A, B, and C, 9.30, and the three sections that are not included today, 9.27 A, B, and C, be reduced to single-family dwelling, one-story. And we ask for 100-foot space between our view fence and the next development. Because when we do ask that question in a meeting, we don't get a really complete, straight answer. The answer is, well, when we draw up the plans, then we kind of know what the dense, how far it's gonna be away from your fence. And some people's fences, it'll be farther than other people's. That's not really a concise and complete answer as far as to us who've paid money to live there and want separation. And I think I covered all my points, and thanks for listening. And I am sorry that it's very confusing for y'all to have to go through all that. But we'll be happy to help you clarify it. We've been studying it a lot.
Thank you. That is all I have for speaker cards. Are there any more, Heather? Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Please come forward and, your name and address. And then if you'll just turn in your speaker card to Heather over there to your left.
Good evening, Commissioner, Commission. My name is Sterling Bell. I live at 18419 West Verbina Drive. I'm in parcel 9.6. My concern was touched on just a little bit. My concern is the school in parcel 7, 7.1, parcel 7.13. What is now labeled as parcel 9.31 was the location of the school before. Also, a park behind it, where it says remains a park on the map. Parcel 7.11 is currently a, what's it called, a recreation area. It's our, it's a, it's a restaurant with a bar. To have a school at 7.13, I understand, according to zoning, 300 foot from a bar's location, you can have a school. But literally adjacent to a bar, having a school, I understand, as Newland said it, as, well, I got it in here. As Alex said, Newland asked for this parcel to be changed from 9.3 because they were too listed, and they chose 7.13. The reason I'd, I'd ask for this to be redone, or this, this to not pass today, is they need to change that back and put a school there. They put a designator for a single-family homes there. Instead, that should be a school. You can put single-family homes by Presidio, you know, by a restaurant, by a bar, versus having it right next to a school. Again, that, that's, you know, that's a community concern. That's a family concern, a people's concern. Also, the, the 40-foot height on, on the listed 45 feet. Imagine if your home behind you, someone's house is 45-foot high. It's also another concern. I, I've seen three-story apartments overlooked. You know, somebody's upstairs in a top apartment, looking into your home that you paid for a view lot, upwards to $26,000 for a view lot, and there's a 45-foot building behind it. So those are my concerns that I ask the Commission to, to not allow this to go through today. Is one, letters have been submitted, two Newland letters have been submitted to the school district to have this brought back up. You know, the, the location, again, Newland asked for this location to be changed. Two, again, they had two options. They chose the one next to a place that is going to reopen.
30 seconds.
Serve alcohol. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time from the public? Yes, ma'am. Yes, come forward. If you have a card, just give it to Heather, and then your name and address for the record, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for serving. My name is Roxanne Fletcher. My husband and I own at 15345 South 180th Avenue up in Goodyear. We were actually the first to build up on 9.26. And I know you've heard concerns about Mary Kay not being honest with us. And I don't want to really hear due diligence because to me, when I go to a doctor, they're the expert in the field. Mary Kay Homes, we're home builders. They're the expert in the field. Newland Community holds a, has an information center. And in that information center, they have a glass case that doesn't say, oh, this is gonna be my have a glass case that doesn't say, oh, this is gonna be multi-family housing here, this is gonna be that. They hold it out as being this single-family community, this beautiful place to move to. Uh, many of us brought our retirement money here and did exactly that. And to now look at buildings like everybody's saying, whatever, but that's not only my concern. Now I have an apartment building directly behind my house where I have a view fence, where I live six months a year and people see me out there, I heat my pool, I'm out there all winter long, and now all of a sudden I disappear. You know, when you have buildings on top of buildings and that many more people coming into such a dense area like that, that's just concerning. Uh, yeah, crime rates, I, I'm gonna put it out there, crime rates will change. Um, you know, like I said, they're the expert in the field. Last night when we asked about the information center, point-blank, Mr., uh, Pete, I'm sorry, I don't remember his last name, told us that they don't know any information about what's gonna go where. If you have an information center and you're holding your, the expert in the field, then don't have an information center if you can't put people in there that can honestly answer these questions. And again, you know, Mary Kay Homes told us, we would never see anything built back there. So here nor there, like I said, I just want you guys to, you know, take into consideration the investments that many of us brought from other states, other countries, when nobody else could afford to build because everybody was upside down in homes and losing their homes left and right. We came in and invested our money, our retirement money into this community and figured this was our lifelong home. And now here we sit, gonna look at, like they say, 40, 45-foot structures built on top of 20 feet of landfill. Please take into consideration what, what we've invested in our, in our lifetimes in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? None? Once I close the public hearing, that's it? Okay. Public hearing closed at this time. I'm actually, um, I, I want to take a little bit prerogative of the chairman again, I've done that a few times tonight. Um, but maybe this will also help my commissioners. A couple of things, I'm gonna ask staff to, uh, address this. One, will you make comments about the wash and what we look at there and what's being looked at for that? Two, will you make, um, comments about, uh, the traffic studies we do and, and what we look at there? And then three, um, uh, I, I know that several people have talked about the view, but, um, I asked you earlier, Katie, about this, will you touch on how there is a further process here that we look at? It may not be a public hearing, but we do look at these plans, uh, moving forward. So if you could quickly, uh, touch on those three items, um, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, with regards to the wash, um, with zoning, there are preliminary drainage reports that are submitted to the city and reviewed by our engineering department. Those are public record. Anyone can submit a public records request and get a copy of that report if you wish. Those are further refined as we go through the process. Um, and I believe that's what Mr. Tyke may have said, that we don't know exactly where it is because you do preliminary plans and then the wash further gets planned. But there are engineering requirements regarding drainage, um, flows, 100-year storm events, um, in our engineering regulations that, um, adhere to that wash. I'd also say if anyone is currently experiencing flooding from the wash, the city wants to know that. So please contact the city and, um, we'll, we'll get some contact information for you. I mean, barring maybe the huge rains we had in 2014, which were 1,000-year event, you shouldn't, your backyard shouldn't regularly be flooding from the wash, so we want to hear that now. So that's what I'd say about the wash. Also with regards to traffic in zoning, a traffic impact analysis is submitted to the city and reviewed and, um, that's reviewed, um, for the level of service, but also are deceleration lanes, turn lanes needed, when is a stop sign or a traffic signal needed? Um, and if any of those are warranted by the traffic studies, we would put those requirements onto the zoning. Um, and again, those are further refined as we find out more details about the exact uses that are gonna be built. With regards to plans, the, the zoning is the most important. This tells you what could be, you know, what's the maximum building envelope someone could build. You guys are seeing the heights. Um, we do look at preliminary plating, which goes through the public process. There's not a public hearing like there is tonight for the, um, preliminary plaits, but they do go before our Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for review and approval. And then it goes on to the final plat stage, which goes to our City Council for review and approval. And can I, I heard one more question that I was hoping to.
Absolutely, please.
Um, I heard someone say something about the height and that there might be fill going in on one of the parcels.
There is fill right now.
And I, and I just, just, I, I want to say that we measure height from the street curb, not from, you, you can build the height of a parcel all you want, we measure the height from a point of reference on the street. So someone could not build up the height of the land and thus get a taller building. That land height would be included in our height measurement because we measure height from the street. So, does, does that answer your questions, Chairman?
It does, thank you, Katie. Are there any other discussions from any of our commissioners? Commissioner Barnes?
Yeah, you know, this isn't the first time that we've heard people talk about, the salesperson for a home builder told me this or told me that, which, you know, frankly turned out to be ridiculous. And I'm not really sure how we address that issue, you know, at this point without creating more regulations or more committees, but it is a problem. And, um, I always tell people, just as a citizen, if you're buying something with an empty lot and you want to know what's going on over there, call the City Planning Department and they will sit down and tell you everything they know. But I think that's another issue that we have to address. I have some questions for staff. Is, are we doing that now or are we?
Yes.
Okay. Um, on 7.1, I didn't really get a good look at what was and what's proposed and I'm wondering if I could see that again. Did I steal that from you? Do you want to steal any of mine? Questions?
And this one. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Barnes, um, are you referring to the existing zoning versus the proposed zoning?
Yeah, I, yeah, I was trying to get an idea of what, what was, what's it zoned for now and what is being proposed.
Alex, I think you had that map under your presentation. If we could pull that one up.
Lady, can I have my presentation, please? Okay. The existing zoning is single-family detached creative lot, which allows for the cluster products, which can also be called a court home, um, alley-loaded products, zero lot lines and regular single-family detached.
And that was under our old regulations, correct?
That was under the 2008 amendment.
Okay.
And, yeah, the existing zoning criteria is included on the table.
So, okay. So it's going from single-family detached to court homes in that parcel right there? All right, that was one question. The other one was, um, the, uh, there was some talk about the buffers in front of some of the view fences in 926, 95, 96, that whole area along there. And I, I see that what's proposed now is a, looks like a 40-foot buffer is going to be required along those areas. Is that right?
That, that, um, is the minimum.
Okay. So it'll be 40 or, or more?
Forty or more.
But in the current zoning, or what is provided as far as a buffer as it is right now?
Um, thank you. That's a great question. In, in the current zoning, there are no minimums. They weren't ever contemplated. Uh, stipulations included in preliminary plaits typically have a stipulation that says view fencing is utilized where appropriate, um, but there's no regulation on that, so, which is why we added some assurance that there was some sort of minimum.
So if this amendment is not passed, then there's no requirement to have any buffer on either side of those view fences?
Correct. There's no regulation for us to.
So some other home builder could just come up and put a single-family right there and basically have a, okay.
And to follow up on that, Chairman Barnes, uh, or Commissioner Barnes, I, I also want to point out, and that's why I wanted to touch on the process, is during the preliminary plat process, we all have the opportunity again to discuss all those people having view fences and is 40 feet enough and is, are we making sure the product that is now behind them, you know, not intrusive, uh, to them? So there is a, a, there is a lot, you guys all bring it up tonight and we appreciate that and, and we will keep that in mind as stuff rolls forward, but I think what we're determining tonight is just what kind of a product might be back there.
Um, okay. Uh, next question, the school properties. So right now, there's two school properties and it's currently approved for schools on both of those properties, correct? So I understand.
Correct.
Okay.
The two blue areas on the, the left side is the current zoning for school sites.
Right, right now, those are, those are schools and what's being proposed is all, is the, the, uh, 924 is gonna change away from school, the other one's gonna stay a school as it currently is. So why is it going from two, two to one? It, was it kind of an option thing or did we think there's gonna be that many people there to require two elementary schools?
I'd like to ask Pete to respond to these questions. Um, they work with the schools districts, so.
Commissioner, Commission members, thanks for the question. There, back in, um, 2004 and it was actually, um, submitted to the school district, uh, and discussed with them how many sites they wanted and where based on roughly this plan. They chose, chose the two sites that are there, um, somewhere around 13 years ago, um, probably about, um, three or four years ago. We had, had a meeting with the school and had mentioned they had the two sites reasonably closed each other. Did they still think they needed both? So the school district took a look at that, uh, and they chose the site which they wanted to keep. They said they didn't need both. Um, I don't really know the reasons that, they didn't explain them, they just said they don't need both. Um, the only thing I do know is over the years, they have said that, um, they calculate students based on, uh, so many kids per household and I do know that's went down a little bit. Outside of that, they were the ones that chose that 7.13 site and released the 9.31 site.
It, and let me follow up with that. It, in seven, 7.11, that's currently zoned for a park and it shows it's gonna stay zoned for a park, but it looks like there's a restaurant club built in that area. Am I reading that correctly?
Correct. There's a, um, there's actually a, um, interpretation done by the planning department some time ago that, that showed it included the, um, community center designation. So there in the top, what would be the northwest corner of it is where the Presidio Residence Club is located.
Mm-hmm. I mean, and this goes back to staff, but there are regulations on how close, uh, facility that sells alcohol can be to a school. And I, I don't recall what that distance is. I'm thinking it's like 400 feet or something like that.
Yes, I, uh, I believe the gentleman who spoke before had the correct measurements, 300, I think it's 300, based on different types of liquor licenses. So I, I'm not sure off the top of my head the liquor rules.
Yeah, thank you. It, it's 300 feet, but only certain types of liquor license has, have to be separated. Bars, liquor stores, restaurants don't have to be separated. I'm not the liquor license expert, but that's my understanding of the rules.
Is this a, a, a public restaurant or is it just to those residents in that area?
So, um, okay, lastly, and then I'll give it up to the other commissioners. There, one of the other things, there was some talk about the area, you know, the area south of the existing residences and I'm talking about, you know, 9.25 through 9.30, that section in there about the native grade being raised up. Now, in this, at this level, we don't get to see if the builders are gonna propose raising the grade, you know, from native to something else. We just don't get to see that, but, um, it, it, it really depends on what the streets are at around it, but it's the, in this area, I don't know if you can answer this question then, is it possible that that grade, that native could be raised more than, you know, three or four feet to make it slope properly? It sounded like some of the concerns were, well, this is gonna go up 10, 20 feet, but...
Thank you. And I, I don't know all the engineering standards. They can add, and there is, you know, dirt being added to that area, but again, we measure from the street. So even if they added 10 feet of dirt, we're still measuring from the street. So that wouldn't get them a, you know, it wouldn't be 10 feet plus their, you know, 20-foot, 30-foot building, now that, now it's basically 40 feet. We'd still measure from the curb, so if they added 10 feet of dirt, then they've only got, you know, 20 feet left for a building. But they have to meet, I mean, any type of building, there's building regulations and engineering regulations on grading and, um, you know, the soils that are necessary for structures that are built on them.
Because Willis is built, right?
Correct.
I see it here, Willis is built and the residences along, um, along Chuck Wagon, some of those other streets. I'm looking at Google Maps on my phone now. Um, are built, so that grade, I mean, there's not a lot that it can go up. They can't just build a big hill and I'm trying to address some of the concerns. If I understand this correctly, I mean, if those two roads are here and here, they're not gonna build it way up. I mean, if there's a drop down to the next road, there's gonna be mostly a drop down to the next road when they're done. Am I understanding correctly?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Barnes, um, I'd just like to point out that during the development process, um, there may be cut-and-fill activity that takes place on any given parcel of land. There may be a cut condition because the soil is unsuitable for what's the structural loads that are gonna be placed on it. There may be a cut condition because that owner may have a friend that needs dirt, right? I mean, we don't, we don't know, we don't know that. Um, but during the engineering process, the engineering department is part of the overall review of the development, looks at compaction, soil types, because the road, city roads are built on dirt. And we have a vested, we as a community have a vested interest in ensuring that our roads, sidewalks, curbs, uh, water sewer lines and other utility lines aren't built on substandard materials. So if there's a significant amount of fill, it would consequently require a significant amount of compaction and addition, additional soil testing to ensure that city engineering design standards are met or, are met or exceeded. So it's a difficult question to ask at this point in time because clearly, can somebody bring some dirt and fill material onto their property? And the answer to that is yes. Would somebody choose to raise their property 10, 15, 20, whatever feet, pick a number? Um, that could happen, but there's a corresponding cost associated with it when it becomes ripe for development. And I just wanted to reassure the Commission that if there is fill material that's brought on any of these parcels during the development process, it is reviewed during the engineering process and consequently, it's also reviewed in the building permit processes for the individual homes. They also have, because, you know, our slabs are post-tensioned slabs and things of that nature, so there's soil compact, there's all, there's a variety of different additional studies that take place during the single-family home or structures, whatever those structures may be, um, construct, uh, during that permitting process as well. So just to wrap up, can dirt be brought onto a property? Yes. Would it be a significant amount? I can't stand here or sit here rather and tell you that it wouldn't be a significant amount, but the cost goes up with the more fill that you bring because additional study and compaction is required. is required.
In my experience, no builder wants to bring in dirt. They all wanna have a balanced site where the cut-and-fill adds up, so they don't have good money. Okay. So I think the bottom line is, we can't absolutely say, but probably not.
Commissioner Walters?
Yes, is there anyone from the staff or the applicant who can explain to me why view fencing was sold up against multifamily or higher-density product, and why there was no buffer up against that when the high, when the view fencing was sold?
I think we probably should let the applicant address that, if possible.
You didn't build the homes, right?
No.
I can, I can break it down, because that was a rather compound. When view fencing...
Oh, I got it.
View fencing was sold, what was zoned on the other side of it?
Well, what is zoned, as you see is the multifamily?
No, at the time the view fencing was sold, what was the zoning on the other side of it?
Multifamily.
Then why was view fencing sold with no provision for a buffer?
Well, if, if you recall, we were putting buffers in, so in other words, the parcel above it had a 60-foot buffer that will follow right down through. So to answer your question, there may not have been a requirement for a buffer, but we've always had planned to put in a buffer.
What do you make of the statements that were made that view fencing was sold, and people were told either nothing would be built back there, or that it would be a single family?
What do I make of it?
I got, can, can we just, just to clarify, Mr. Teige is not the home builder, is the developer, so keep that in the back of your mind, that he, his company didn't build the homes or necessarily sell them.
Well, he's here for the applicant, I'd like his opinion on that.
No, absolutely.
Sure. Yeah, I, as Mr. Barnes had mentioned, sometimes hear things that realtors have said, whether they're true or not, I don't know, I wouldn't be surprised sometimes. But beyond that, what we do is we sell to the builder, and the builder controls their sales. They certainly, what they have to do is do a public report. The public report in there states what's going to be around there, so they're aware of what is going there based on the zoning. They have to look that up.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, Commissioner Walters?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Steiner? We're gonna hold you though to three minutes.
How many of these parcels in this pad amendment are changing designation because
Just, I, I don't know if it's in your presentation or Mr. Teige's, but there was a map with the green and white that showed the areas of change that might be useful.
Yeah. So these, these are all changing with this amendment.
Okay. So they, they'd previously been zoned, okay, but now they're changing to different zoning?
They're changing development standards.
Okay. So, so basically, this, this, this pad amendment is not really changing a whole heck, whole heck of a lot. These things have already been previously designated, and they're just tying everything into one package with this pad amendment.
Yes. The purpose of my statement was, all of it is zoned for residential uses, but the lot widths, the development standards, the types of development, the townhomes versus apartments, that was in the original amendment, those are, there's not a significant change of land use.
Okay, so a, a lot of the change, if, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of the change is because a majority of it is the changes we did to our regulations to kind of bring all of our standards up, up to par, basically, to match a lot of other cities.
So a lot of, a lot of these, what am I looking for? Okay, so a, a, a lot of these will remain the way they are, and we're just putting them into one nutshell. Is that be correct? Okay. So, nothing, nothing really changes, it's just bringing into one package. So these things are, if they, if there is, if there are questions about building on other parcels, near their parcels, that goes to the builder. That's who they should address, and not so much the amendment. Would that be correct?
I'm not sure I'm following.
I, I think that, and let me see if I can help you, Commissioner Steiner, on this. We, as the commission, will have another bite at the apple on a lot of this as the preliminary plats come forward. The P A D amendment says this type of product can exist in these squares, but then we will have another bite when, when whoever is going to build brings those forward, and we then have the chance to ask that builder, okay, one, we already know the 40-foot, but we may think that we only want single level along that easement, because there's view fencing on that, or whatever. So we will have, this commission will have another bite at the apple to further address concerns that we've heard tonight.
Each parcel separately?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Can you take back the before-and-after shot?
Okay, does anybody, does any of the commissioners have any further questions at this time?
No, thank you.
For staff or...
For staff or, or applicant?
No.
You're good, Commissioner Walters?
I'm good, thank you, Chairman.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. With that, I'm gonna ask for a motion on this item, and then it will give us an opportunity to discuss. So with that, I open it to one of you to make a motion, just so we can get to discussion, it doesn't necessarily mean...
Mr. Chairman, can I interject one second? Excuse me. Just for a point of clarification, there are four of you, we do have a quorum, it would take a unanimous vote to recommend approval to the council of this. For the benefit of, reminder, refresher for yourselves, and also for our guests here tonight, our interested citizens, the Planning Commission on Zoning Items makes a recommendation to the council, the council is the final authority, and so if the commission recommends approval, or recommends denial, or recommends approval with additional stipulations, or what have you, whatever the vote, however it ends up tonight, this case will be, is advertised to progress to the city council on January 22nd. Just for, and that meeting will be at 6 o'clock in this particular room, in front of the council, and there will be another public hearing, in which case, any interested residents or participants would like to address the council. So I just wanted to make every sure, before any vote or motion is taken, so sort of, that way I had everybody's attention. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for indulging me on that.
Thank you. With that, if no one has any questions, I'd take a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I, for purposes of discussion, remove, move that we approve case number
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, or by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Steiner, to approve the Montecito pad amendment at this point in time. Is there any discussion?
I will discuss when we...
Commissioner Barnes?
I think my, one of my biggest concerns is, well, on 7.1, it, it seems like the zoning is going to be more, more dense, more traffic-intensive than it previously was. And that always seems to be a concern, if you bought and the land next to you was zoned for one thing, and then it gets rezoned for something that's going to be more dense, more traffic-intensive, that always seems to be unfair. So I have a concern about that property. I have a concern about the school site. I mean, we do have schools next to shopping centers and restaurants and things like that all the time, but if there's a choice, I'm not sure why the school pointed at that one. I'm gonna speculate that maybe it's a little bit larger, but I, I don't know, maybe, maybe the district didn't completely understand what was around the area, so I'm a little bit concerned about that. I, I think, I think the areas below, you know, 926, 9596, I think if we fail this amendment, what's zoned there now, I think, is worse than what is proposed to go in there. Because it's multifamily, and I think it's gonna be denser and more traffic-intensive and taller than what the area's proposing. It would still be nicer if it, you know, if it all stayed multifamily and, or a single family. And it may, you know, until somebody buys that land and comes back and then shows us what they wanna build on it, we don't know exactly what they wanna do, but I don't think that's bad. Those are my comments.
If I, to your point, on the first portion of it, 7.1 and 7.13, I don't see a change from the previous zoning to the zoning today. As you look at the map, I agree with you, I'm kind, I'm curious as to why the school decided to choose that one, but that's out of our control. I do agree with you on your second point, that I, I think the zoning is actually far better moving forward than it was previously.
Well, 7-1, it looks like it was all single-family detached, and now it's going to a court home product.
Oh, excuse me, I'm looking at 7-11, that's my, that's my bet, you're correct.
Yeah, and that one seems like it is a denser, more traffic-intensive use than it was before. But on the other hand, like I say, down in, in, below 9.269596, if this amendment, or an amendment, doesn't go through, then someone can come in there and build multifamily, and they can build up to whatever the setbacks are for rear yard. I mean, you could end up with an apartment building that's, I think, 60-foot off of that view fence. So something needs to be done there. Can't just, I don't think it should just stay as it is now. So, I mean, overall, I, I think the amendment's moving in the right direction, but, you know, maybe there are some adjustments that still need to be made.
And I think that we have the opportunity still, when the preliminary, preliminary plats come out, to still, you know, adjust those in the staff recommendations, if we feel that buffer space or the product isn't appropriate in those places, as you well know. So I, I, I don't think that, I think we definitely have our job cut out for us on the parcels south of 9.26, to make sure that it's a product that fits in the community and has the appropriate setbacks, but I also am confident that our staff knows that very well as, as well.
I agree, I think you should take it on a parcel-by-parcel basis, look at each one as it comes to us, and then make the adjustment if that's what needed to be done.
So if I understand correctly, we can, we can make our recommendation to city council with, they're not really stipulations, but we can say...
Preservation?
We approve this, but we think, you know, item A, item B, and item C, we don't really, we don't really like those areas, I don't know.
You can...
I'm gonna look to staff for advice on how we address our concerns on specific areas within a very large area.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, commission, if you have concerns about the density of 7.1, I think currently it's entitled for 71 lots, and I believe the proposal that's before you tonight is 90. If you wanted to, in response to the conversation that you heard tonight, the commission has full power or authority to create a stipulation to cap it at the same level of density, 71 lots, as it is currently entitled. And then if it, if Mr. Teige moves forward with, with something that's a little bit different than that, then that parcel would have to come back to you for a zoning amendment, and we would have a similar discussion. So that's an option. You have the power and authority to create stipulations to address any concerns that you have as a commission of yourselves, or in response to what you heard tonight.
We have not seen this preliminary plat on 7.1, correct?
Correct. No, sir, we have not.
Okay. So at the moment, the motion on the floor is that we, we move the whole package together as we see it already. Obviously, that motion is open for amendments if you want to address specific concerns. I still, in my opinion, I believe that we have enough latitude as the commission to address further issues as each preliminary plat comes forward.
Mr. Chairman, that point is well-taken, but I disagree with it. I think we're spending a lot of time looking at what is currently approved and what is being proposed, and in that sense, what was across from view fencing was multifamily, there's some multifamily in the proposal. In the 7.1, there was a cluster home, 71-unit product, now being proposed to 90. But I think if we only look at it from the standpoint of what currently is zoned, I know that's our job, to look at what's currently zoned and what's being proposed, we don't successfully listen to what the residents are telling us about the conditions of the water, of the traffic, of the location of the school. What they're telling us is they don't think there should be multifamily in these locations at all. And if we advance this, I feel that we fail to listen to that concern, I don't think it's appropriately addressed if we deal with it on a parcel-by-parcel basis at a later point. That's just my opinion.
To, to that point, Commissioner Walters, then, do you have suggested amendments that you would like to see to the P A D?
Well, I haven't served on the commission as long as you have, and I don't know the, the correct way to, to give direction on this, but I just think the conversation needs to continue about the existence of multifamily zoning, as expressed by the citizens.
So, and I, I've heard a lot, as you have as well, when, when they say multifamily, what is your concern with multifamily? Because it is, it is not apartments.
Probably my strongest concern is that, you know, we have a job to do up here to listen to all the sides, but at the end of the day, I'm a homeowner in the city of Goodyear too. And I would not have purchased a view fence if I knew that someone could build a multifamily or even a single-family home right up against that fence. And so because of that, because that concern exists for me, and I, I don't know that I can reconcile it tonight, I'm, I, I can tell you, I won't be comfortable moving this forward based on what I've heard tonight.
Chairman, may I add a point of clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just wanna clarify that there is no multifamily in the proposal tonight, and the piece 9.27A, B, and C is not before you, and it, it cannot be considered by the commission tonight.
But the orange 9.29A, 9.29B, as well as the increased density of 7.1, are the real sticking points for the citizens, and I just don't know that I've heard anything to, to resolve that in my mind.
I, I'm not arguing that point, I just wanted to clarify that single-family dwellings are proposed there, not multifamily. Multifamily is not permitted use in the P A D.
Thank you, Katie.
Well, then, I believe we can propose stipulations, and then this commission decides whether or not they agree with that stipulation.
You can give it a shot.
I will go first, then. I, I'm going to propose stipulations... I, I'm going to propose a stipulation that the, the number of units on seven-point-one would remain as it is.
So, I just want to make sure that we get this clear. So, you wanna, I'm gonna do it as an amendment, and your amendment, Commissioner Barnes's amendment, is to continue parcel seven-point-one at the same density as it currently is, correct?
Correct. Or, the number of units, I guess, was a better...
May, may I propose a stipulation language with the ability to word smith?
Absolutely, we'd rather you give us language.
Parcel seven-point-one shall be limited to a maximum of seventy-one dwelling units.
Perfect, so that's the amendment. I need a second for that amendment.
Second.
Okay. Now, is there any discussion on Chairman Barnes's amendment? Commissioner Walters, are you okay with that? The language?
Again, I, I hate to be the sticking point, or maybe I like to be the sticking point, but I don't know if that, I get that that keeps that parcel the way it's perceived to be now, but I don't know that that addresses the concerns that the citizens have raised.
We'll do amendments two and three for other, this is just one.
I'm, I'm talking about seven-point-one.
Oh, okay.
They're concerned about the elevation change, the water, how high those structures will be up against seven-point-two. And I just don't know that changing it to say, okay, we'll sort of leave it the way it is now, addresses the fundamental concerns they have, because their concerns really speak to what's proposed and really what's zoned now, and we only have the opportunity to listen to that tonight.
I think the issue, you know, with the wash and flooding, I mean, we can't, we can't really see that that is gonna be looked at by flood control, engineering, not only this, this city, but also the county, they're all gonna look at that and make engineers do pages and pages of studies to show that things aren't gonna flood. So, I'm not really concerned about the wash, I, I believe the wash will be dealt with when they actually build on that property. My big concern was, I'd say, I think it was fair to increase density in a space next to someone that had already bought.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the amendment for seven-point-one?
You can change it.
There are possibilities to do that.
You can, you can, she can convince me to change the amendment, right? Or propose something different, added, or lessened from the proposed amendment? This is good parliamentary procedure.
They're not awake. No.
Yeah, you can just say, well, I think you should add this to your amendment, to whatever you think.
If, if there is no other discussion on seven-point-one, on the amendment, I'm gonna ask for a vote on the amendment, and I will ask Heather to call a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just point of order, if you're, if the commission is intending to have stipulations for different parcels through here, let's, I think your approach here is very good, just go parcel by parcel, but there needs to be one overall motion, and we can't just vote on a stipulation for parcel seven-point-one and then move to seven-point-eleven, for example. Does that make sense? So, we-
You can vote for all the stipulations.
Motions for all the stipulations at one time, understanding that you haven't created the other ones that the commission may want to create, but we've got notes here, and we will help you when you get to that point.
Okay, 'cause I may, we may need to go back one by one on those stipulations.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. I'll go along with your way, this time, one time only. Okay.
That, that was the first proposed stipulation, the second one-
That's the first one, so if you have another one, Commissioner Barnes, please.
Yeah, the second one was the school, 'cause I, I think the southerly parcel is, is a better place. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure how to propose a stipulation, because if that's the one the school wants, that's the one the school wants, and, you know, they're gonna do more studies and, and look at this property more than I am.
And to that point, I believe that, you know, that's an elected body of their own, and if the school district, that, that, they have that decision-making power, and I'm not sure that a stipulation from us, at some, I mean, that's kinda like poking an elected body, you know, back in the chest, saying, we know better than you. So, I mean, if you want to, to, to go forward with that, that's certainly on the table, but I, I, I just don't see that as, within our purview.
How, how binding is seven-point-one-three, or how binding is the letter of release for nine-point-three-one?
I don't know as far as what you mean by binding, but the school district, the district, the school board made the decision, they've released it, we saw the official letter from the district releasing nine-point-two-four, which means they intend to keep seven-point-one-three. I mean, I guess, not sure that it should be part of the overall package, but I guess we could ask for reconsideration to, to the school district, but I'm, again, I, I'm nervous that that is outside of our purview.
You know, I, I think I'm okay with just going on record that we've looked at this issue, and, and I've stated my concerns, that that would've been a better parcel, and if that's what the school district chose, you know.
I didn't understand that to be the school district's choice, I thought they said, and correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I'm wrong at least at some point every day, but I understood them to say they only needed one location, and, and not that they preferred this particular seven-point-one-three.
The applicant said that they-
And I will double-check this.
Did they select-
Will staff and, and Mr. Teike, will you confirm that it was the school district that chose to keep?
Well, if you're telling me that, I'll take that. Is that what you-
No, I, I want to make sure, I, that's what I heard from Mr. Teike, so I want to make sure that that's correct. The school district chose to keep the seven-point-one and release nine-point-two-four. That was their decision? And was that made by the school, the school board, does that-
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. Teike to come up to the podium so we can all hear? Thank you.
Commissioner, commission members, that was their decision. One thing I just wanted to mention is, seven-point-one-three and seven-point-one-one, the reason the Presidio doesn't take the whole site is the plan was to combine the balance of it in with the school when they moved forward, so that it became more of a unified area that the school district may or may not choose to use. So, there is additional acreage, it'll eventually be, be the park, that will work together with the school to, to kind of-
So, that was the, the thought process behind the school districts?
I'm not saying that's the thought process, that was the discussion with the school-
Okay.
Early on, when we had questioned then whether they wanted two sites, they went and looked at it. I don't know who made the decision, all I know is I got the letter that you've seen from Dr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Chairman, if I may too, I, I just want to add that after we received this first comment, we've reached out to the school district several times to get their comment on the specific issuance of the proximity to Presidio, and this has included not just Dr. Rogers, but other staff with the school district, and we've gotten no response from them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Barnes, are you satisfied?
With the school, yeah. Yeah, and for my third stipulation, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let our other esteemed commissioner talk about that. Do you want to propose a stipulation?
Commissioner Barnes, can you repeat that? Just pull your microphone, we're having a little difficulty hearing you, thank you.
So, I had some concerns about parcels nine-point-two-eight, two-nine, two-five, three-zero, but I think our other commissioners have some similar concerns, so I'm gonna let her address that one, and then-
I think I've already been heard on it. I'm concerned about the view fencing, I'm concerned about the minimum forty-feet buffer between the two areas, and I'm concerned about the type of product that is being proposed to put in there, even though I understand that it was already zoned that way. I feel that I'm listening to the citizens on this one, and I just don't know if you're gonna be able to move me on that. So, if you want to make a stipulation, I'm all ears, but I'm not gonna make it.
Well, my biggest concern is changing the grade above native, but I think your concern is just not really having, your concern is with the, some of the density in there, the orange areas, what about the red area, the commercial area? What was your thought on that?
I haven't heard concerns about that from the citizens, so it's not my, my focus, and that's right up against the corner of that, those two streets, and so, I don't think there's view fencing up along that commercial red section.
'Cause we could make a stipulation that says that nine-point-two-A and nine-point-B should be, you know, single-family detached fifty, like the areas around it. I mean, I, we can make that if you want to. I'm just trying to involve you in the parliamentary process.
And that's the forty-foot, single-family detached forty-foot?
I guess, just to, for clarification, Katie, can you help us here? So, the nine-point-two-six currently is what, the single-family detached sixty or fifty? That's, that's built out today? With the view fencing, what, what product is, or what zoning do we have there today? Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, the current zoning is the primary residential, which equivalent, is equivalent to about, say, the sixty-foot lots.
Okay, so, for Commissioner Walters, then, what an amendment that included basically nine-point-two-six C, two-point-eight, two-point-nine-A and B, that they are a single-family detached sixty unit, would that satisfy your concerns that you've heard from the citizens?
Along with, along with the stipulation on seven-point-one?
At this moment, yes, but we will vote on those stipulations one by one.
All together.
And it would have the same height as the light green all around it? It would be the same, under that stipulation? The orange would go away, and it would become light green with the same density and height?
Same density and, and height as nine-point-two-six. I did not, just so that you're clear, I did not include nine-point-three-zero, which nine-point-three-zero is single-family detached fifty.
Well, I think an appropriate amendment would be that nine, nine-two-nine-A and B be the same designation as the adjacent ones, nine-point-three, nine-point-two-eight, which I believe is single-family detached fifty. I think that's a reasonable, that's a reasonable density to be up against what's there now, which is single-family detached primary.
We might be getting somewhere. Can I have single-story on lots that are adjacent to view fencing?
As a stipulation, absolutely, you can, you can put that in the, you could put that in the P A D, yeah. So, let, let's, let me see if I captured this, then, Commissioner Walters, and then, mind you, we'll go back one by one, and then there'll be an overall vote on the whole package. So, we will change, the amendment you're requesting is to change nine-point-two-nine-B, nine-point-two-nine-A to match two-point-eight, two-point-nine, and three-point-O. Additionally, on the north end, bordering nine-point-two-six, where there's the forty-foot setback already in place, additional stipulation is single-family dwellings, or single-level dwellings only.
Correct.
Okay. Did you guys capture that?
I, I, I don't think that's entirely correct, I think we're concerned with any place with a view fence can only have single-family adjacent, which I think also includes nine-point-five and nine-point-six, so.
There's view fencing along that road?
May I read two draft stipulations, and you can tell me whether I captured it?
There you go.
Parcel nine-point-two-nine-A and parcel nine-point-two-nine-B shall be designated single-family detached fifty. And then, an additional stipulation, lots adjacent to view fences are limited to single-story.
Yes.
Yes.
And then, the question is, is that throughout the P A D or just on that parcel?
That's up to Commissioner Walters.
Where else do we have that issue?
There, I, I'm not sure everywhere, I don't know if I could give you a comprehensive exhaustive list, but the other question is, if, if this is written this way, it will adhere from today forward. So, you could either give us the direction to do the research between now and council, and find out which existing lots have those view fences, so we could list those, or if we leave it the way it's written today, then, you know, parcel nine-point-one-four, which has no development around it, would be impacted. So, it's just, do you want it to be from today forward forever and ever, or do you just want this for the lots that currently have view fencing that are built today? If, if you gave us the direction to, you know, we could do the research and make sure we have every single lot that has view fencing, I just would be afraid I'd miss some today if we started making a list.
I'll defer to Commissioner Walters on-
I think that's a better approach than just referring to specific lots in the stipulation if we don't have complete information. Just to be clear, I'm, I'm against there being two-story up against existing view fencing.
Right.
So, okay.
Good. Okay, so, I have on record three stipulations currently, amendments, are there any other amendments or stipulations from any of the commissioners?
No, I, I have an issue with the school site as well, but I'm gonna compromise on that because of the other movement, which I appreciate.
This is your last chance, though, is there any other? What I would prefer to do is, we'll start with the view fencing, and then we'll move up. Or do you want to do one, one amendment?
It's, it's one amendment with three stipulations, but if you can-
And we'll do the main motion?
Yeah, yes, sir, so if we let Ms. Wilkin, again, for clarity, reiterate the notes that she has here, and so, the commission is absolutely clear on what those three stipulations are.
Absolutely, so at this point in time, we are going to take a vote on the amendment, which I have a motion by Commissioner Barnes and a second by Commissioner Steiner for the record.
Don't, don't take a vote yet, so it would be a motion to approve with three stipulations that are-
One, parcel seven-point-one shall be limited to a maximum of seven, seventy-one dwelling units. Two, parcel nine-point-two-nine-A and parcel nine-point-two-nine-B shall be designated single-family detached fifty. And three, lots adjacent to view fences will be limited to single-story, and staff will find out all the parcels that have those, and then list those out and fine-tune it for the council stipulation.
And with that, I will ask Heather to call the roll, and this is on, this is the amendment to the main motion, so, will you call the roll on the amendment, please?
Commissioner Steiner?
Yay.
Commissioner Walters?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
Chairman Bray?
Yes. Okay, so, now we are back to the original motion that was made by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Steiner, with the additional staff, or, excuse me, with the additional amendments to the P A D, and with that, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Steiner?
Yay.
Commissioner Walters?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Barnes?
Yes.
Chairman Bray?
I'm gonna take another chairman's prerogative and explain my vote here. I, I want to say that I- I want to say that I appreciate all the work, both of the staff and the applicant. I think the applicant has gone above and beyond holding two public meetings when there's only one necessary. I think that hopefully we will find a solution, and I appreciate everyone coming out this evening and participating in the process. I do fully understand that you guys have invested in that area out there. It is a great community. I go through there quite often, and I think that we will find some stuff. Keep in mind, again, this is only a recommendation to the council, and the council does have final decision on that. So you must stay engaged if you are concerned about these parcels. And with that, I vote yes. Ladies and gentlemen, with that, the Montecito PAT Amendment is approved. I will take a quick...I'll give a three-minute recess. All of those people, you can make your way home. Trust me, the rest of the meeting won't be as exciting, but I will recess at this time. I appreciate all the residents that are excited about this issue, I really do, but we do have quite a few agenda items that I would like to get through and wrapped up. So if we can do that, we will go ahead and come back to order. And with that, we will go to Agenda Item 8.1, which is the Bennett Meadows Preliminary Plat. And who is presenting on that tonight? All right.
You don't look like Karen.
Yeah, Karen, that's...
And we do not have our secretary, so I think we might need a moment to restart the meeting.
Nope. Sorry.
It's okay.
I didn't notice she wasn't here. Okay, we might be on hold, then.
What?
Oh, we got one. Two. Not the right ones, but it's all right. We do need you guys eventually.
And while we're kind of off business, Karen Craver was ill unexpectedly, so I am presenting in her place both her items.
It's that time of year.
Oh, I know all about the sickness that's going around. By the way, it lasts like three or four weeks, so we might not see Karen for a while.
And I'm also not seeing the presentation, so I'm not sure if Laney is back there. Oh, there.
I know, I was thinking, we should probably put you in the back room.
I'm at the end of it now, you're safe. Seriously, it's been almost four weeks.
This isn't all about you, really. Oh, it's okay.
Really? I always thought it was.
No, you're right, though.
Because I've run into a lot of people.
All right, Heather's back. Now we're back in order. We've been waiting forever. Just kidding. All right.
Thank you.
Item 8.1, Bennett Meadows Preliminary Plat, new business.
Thank you. Bennett Meadows is located on Sereville Avenue and Harrison Street, between Yuma Road and Van Buren Street. In June, Planning Commission recommended to rezone this property from R-110 to R-16, and City Council approved the zoning in June. The R-16 zoning was...is housing on smaller lots that was originally approved, but it is generally consistent with the...was generally consistent with the zoning in the surrounding area. And just as a reminder, there was a stipulation that 70-foot-wide lots had to be provided on the perimeter to be consistent with 70-foot-wide lots that were adjacent. We have now received the preliminary plat. There are 90 single-family lots located on this 28-acre development. There is one access point off of Harrison Street here, and then you enter to the north. There is also an emergency access off this cul-de-sac that would provide secondary emergency access to Sereville Avenue. And there is...sorry, there is a planned traffic signal at Harrison and Sereville. Five and a half acres of open space are being provided within the development. And this might be a better picture. The preliminary plat has been found to be compatible with the surrounding area. It's consistent with the general plan zoning and subdivision regulations. Staff recommends approval subject to the stipulations and requests that Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval. I believe the applicant is still here and can also answer any questions you may have.
Can you go back just to the map real quick, please?
Is this one fine, or...?
No, yeah, that's the one I would say. So they will...there will be a light placed there, correct?
Yes. Let me double-check, and I'm sorry, I'm just not...
And it appears that...
Yes.
It appears that there will be a widening of the road there. Sereville will be widened or a turn lane placed in, because I know that's a single...it's pretty hectic now, and I'm just...is that being addressed on the traffic side?
Thank you, yes. The Sereville Avenue on the right-of-way will be dedicated, and it will be improved to its full point as it is in other parts of Sereville Avenue.
Perfect.
And then, yes, there will be a signal there at Harrison and Sereville.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? The applicant is here, and I want to make sure we give him due time, so the applicant. And thank you, sir, for sitting through that. I apologize, but thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Jack Gilmore, Gilmore Planning and Landscape Architecture. I'm here with the development team and the civil engineer, John Joyce. We put a lot of effort into this plan and coordinate a lot with staff for the zoning, and we've done the same thing for preparing the preliminary plat to this point. We're in agreement with all the stipulations. We had a question that came up about the school district and the bus pickup points. We've talked to both Avondale Elementary School District and the Owafreea High School District. And Copper Trails is the elementary school. It's about three quarters of a mile to the west, and this site is within their district. Wildflower Elementary School is about only 600 feet to the east, but this site is outside the district. Residents can get approval to go to that school, but it takes a variance. They will not approve a variance if they're crossing without a signal. So as Katie said, this site will have a signal. The developers have committed to 25% of that cost, and there is a decel lane going southbound on Sereville that was also part of the improvement plans. The high school will have bus pickup because we are on the west side of Sereville. East side does not have that. So pickup points will be determined later date when the residents call for making reservations for their students. So that's what we learned this morning from the high school district. Other than that, I think we're in full approval with the staff, and be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you for sticking with us. Any questions for the applicant or staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item number 17-500-00008.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Barnes, seconded by Commissioner Walters to approve the Bennett Meadows Preliminary Plat. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those approved...or, excuse me. All those disapproved, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Well, item 8.2, this is the Los Ventanas Preliminary Plat, and it looks like Katie is back to present.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Los Ventanas is located in West Goodyear at Perryville Road and Yuma. The proposal includes 412 single-family lots on 160 acres. Actually, let me go ahead and...and this is, as you can see, a phasing plan because of the preliminary plat is very detailed. It was difficult to throw up on a screen in a single plan, but I do have it. If you have questions, I can put it on Elmo. So it includes 412 single-family lots on 160 acres, 24 acres of open space, and as you can see, is proposed to develop in four phases with the commercial phase being in the fifth, which is not part of this preliminary plat. Access is provided off of Yuma, Perryville, Durango, and 183rd Avenue. And there are traffic signals planned at Perryville and Yuma here, Yuma and 183rd, and Yuma and 183rd, and Perryville and Durango. Once again, the preliminary plat has been found to be consistent with the land use and development standards of the zoning, which is the Los Ventanas PAD. It's also consistent with the general plan and zoning and subdivision regulations. Staff recommends approval subject to the recommended stipulations and asks that Commission recommend approval to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions for staff?
No, thank you.
Is the applicant here on this one? Would the applicant like to address the commission? Again, thanks for sticking with us. I like your humor, though. Any questions for the applicant?
No, thank you.
No.
All right. With that, I'll take a motion.
Chairman, I move that we accept 17-500-00011.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Barnes to approve the Los Ventanas Preliminary Plat. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Do appreciate you sticking around. I apologize for keeping you out all night. Lot...or 8.3 is the preliminary plat for Belarosa at Canyon Trails, and Steve, welcome.
Change your pace.
Thank you.
You know Steve was going to get to go home first, and you took...
Yeah, I know, right? I know.
Mission members, we do have preliminary plat here. This application is for this 17 and a half acres here for Belarosa, pretty much surrounding this property. We've got single-family to the north, to the west, to the southwest, and proposed single-family here in Hudson Commons. To the east, we have existing development within Canyon Trails. This is the safe way here up to the north. We have the ACE hardware. As you can see from this aerial, this is the subject property. Back in 2006, we had preliminary and final plats approved, and those were consistent with the property zoning and the Canyon Trails PAD for court homes. So they moved forward with plats for that, and we have 94 court home lots here. And you can see they got as far as they had the utilities in, the streets. Obviously, they graded and put in the retention areas, even put in the subdivision perimeter walls and some of the play areas. So they got pretty far, but then the recession hit, and then it went dormant. So we have a new developer who is picking this up, and the proposal tonight is to move forward with basically that same plan. They are increasing it to 100 lots. They did do some minor modifications with the subdivision layout, put some lots here and here, but then opened up some open spaces here on this east side. So they have made some minor changes, but again, they're moving forward with a plan consistent with the Canyon Trails PAD for the court home. And what that court home lot is basically, typical lots, about 50 feet wide by 70 deep, that will be detached. All the court homes will access private drives here, and then they will access private streets. So this whole subdivision is private streets, the alleyways and the streets. And those will access to 158th here at two points. No gates are proposed here with this subdivision. So we do have full openings here and full turning movements at both locations. This will be for-sale product. It's not rental like some of the communities we have seen previously at the commission. These will be for-sale court homes. And at this point, we think there will be both a mix of one and two stories. There's no restrictions in terms of what can be built in terms of stories. Open space, 20% of the project is open space, about three and a half acres. They have proposed some enhancements. They will propose a pool and Ramada in this location, play area here, dog park run will be introduced here in this area near the street away from the homes. They'll have a general consolidated mail pickup here, and then they'll have some trails and walkways throughout the community. And this is an illustrated site plan, kind of shows a better picture than the plat, but again, it'll show a lot of the open space areas, the walkways, some of the other amenities.
We can still see it.
Laney, the projector is in the room with bed.
It's probably on a time at 8:30. It just...you've got to go home. So thanks for sticking with us, but we'll continue. If you hit...can you hit next, Steve? We can still see it. Do you know your...
Oh.
Yeah, we can...because we can still see it on ours.
So I'm almost done, though. The last thing I probably want to discuss is visitor parking. They'll have visitor parking on the street as well as...they will be providing at least 18-foot-long driveways, so there will be at least one visitor spot in the driveway along with the garage spaces for the homeowner. And I should also point out, these are basically standard width streets, even though they're private, they're standard width, so you can have parking. They're showing parking on one... width, so you can have parking. They're showing parking on one side in designated spaces, but it is a standard width street. And as part of the improvements, they'll do most of the improvements to Van Buren, One Hundred and Fifty-Eight, the real, the streets and the sidewalks, all of that. They'll finish with the landscaping, so they'll propose the landscaping along the street. There'll be annual payments for landscaping in the median. They're also proposing some enhancements along Van Buren. There, if you've probably noticed, there's a solid wall pretty much basically all along Van Buren. They're gonna open it up here in the southeast corner with some view fencing, and then at this spot here, they're gonna remove that wall and open it up there. So that's part of the landscaping and open space improvements that they are planning with this plat. With that, Mr. Chairman, we find this preliminary plat meets the P E D, meets our subdivision regulations. We are recommending approval subject to the stipulations in the staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have any questions for Steve?
I have one question. How wide are those driveways? The width on the drives going down into the court homes?
This street, oh, this is twenty feet.
Twenty feet wide?
From curb to curb, back of curb, back of curb.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Walters.
Steve, thank you for the presentation. Do you have any concerns about the swimming pool being adjacent to the commercial lots to the east? That's my first question. My second question is, do you have any concern about this play area abutting Van Buren? I know that you said there's view fencing, but it seems a little, I mean, I'm not a developer, but it seems kind of odd to put play area right up against Van Buren when there may be other options. What do you think about that?
Mission members?
Can you tab back, actually, Steve, so we could see the map with that one? Thank you.
I guess how I would respond to that, that question would be, with the pool, that is a new amenity, so that is a new location for a pool. With this subdivision wall and then all of the fencing that's required through building code, the staff position would be that they will, they will use the required safety precautions. So there is really no chance of, you would have to hop a wall, hop a fence to get in from the commercial area. We don't have anything in terms of generating activity back here, so it really is just retention behind Safeway.
Okay.
So I did not see a concern there. With the tot lot, that's in an existing location, so they will take, make use of that existing location. They will maintain, even though they're removing the solid block wall, there is the plan to instruct solid view fence, so there will be that barrier from Van Buren, and then this is retention area just south of that. So you do have a couple barriers before you do hit Van Buren. So the thought was there's enough separation between the two uses.
Okay, so you're now concerned about soccer balls and things like that going out onto Van Buren?
That would be a good kick, but no, not with the separation, not with the view fencing that's still proposed. If, if they had proposed it further south along the street, then yes, I think that would be something we would have looked at.
Thank you for addressing that.
Any further questions for staff? The applicant is here. Would you like to address the commission, or are you...
Commissioners, pleasure to be here. Reece Anderson, on behalf of the applicant. I'm the only thing standing between you and home, so I'm gonna sit down. Our staff, your staff's done a great job on this one. We're excited. This, this project has languished as you've driven by it, I'm sure, for many years. We're excited to bring it back and to make these improvements, where it's just gonna be a great, great improvement here on what was originally planned. I think, to use the old cliche, we've made lemonade out of lemon. I'll answer any questions you have.
Any questions for the applicant?
No.
All right. Again, thank you, and my apologies for this evening.
Not needed. Thank you, sir.
With that, then, I will take a motion for eight point three.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item number, hold on, I just stuck it behind it. Okay,
I'll second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Barnes, seconded by Commissioner Walters to approve the preliminary plat for Bella Rosa at Canyon Trails. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you again. Item number eight point five, this is the zoning ordinance text amendment industrial uses, and with that, I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission. This is another staff-initiated amendment to our zoning ordinance to update and modernize our regulations. This one is focusing, focusing on the use list for our industrial districts. We have a light industrial, light industrial park district, which is meant for light wareha, light manufacturing, warehousing, distribution centers, and then an I-two general industrial park district, which is really meant to be an area where we can put those most intensive uses that might be noxious or offensive and have one district to keep some of those in. The purpose of this is, there's a few things we're trying to achieve. One is, the use list in the light industrial district is very, very short and broad. It just lists manufacturing, warehousing, where the I-two district is more of a laundry list type, trying to think of every type of use there might be, every type of manufacturing. And that causes us problems, because if something is listed in I-two but not I-one, it makes it seem like it's specifically not permitted in I-one. And that may have been the case sometimes and may have not. So for one, we wanted to make the two lists consistent and keep them both a little bit more broad rather than trying to think of every type of manufacturing. We think we can just say manufacturing, and we understand what that means. While we were at it, we also wanted to modernize the list. There were some uses on there that were a little outdated, such as ICE manufacture. Also, uses that have changed a lot. A good example is the sign manufacturing. Twenty years ago, signs used to be almost neon, almost all neon, and so there was a reason we wanted those in that heavy industrial park. Today, most signs are LED, and there's no issue with having those in a lighter industrial park. We also had some problems with just not consistency across the board. For example, parking lot was a listed use in commercial, but it's not listed in industrial. So again, it makes it look like it's specifically not permitted, but we don't see an issue with having parking lots, and in fact, the parking lots across from Lockheed Martin are zoned industrial, so those today are technically a non-conforming use. So what we hope is that this provides us a little bit of clarity. I did want to point out a couple uses to you. Basically, what we think, this is basically cleaning up all the changes we're proposing, or what we would call not substantive, meaning we're, we're just providing clarification, changing the wording so that there's consistency in the wording. Ones that might be considered more substantive, one is that parking lot. We do think it was permitted, but by listing it, it does make it clear that parking lots are permitted. In the accessory use section, we added car wash, fueling station, and minor automotive repair as an accessory. Again, those uses may have been considered allowed under the section that says uses of land customarily incidental, but we have had some users come in and say, you know, that doesn't make me feel, you know, what if you, this staff is saying it's allowed, but what if staff five years from now says it's not allowed? This one was also weird. If you remember, we did that roll-up door text amendment a few months ago, and it specifically talked about car washes, and that always confused staff, because car washes aren't a permitted use. So it's like, why is it talking? It must mean accessory car washes. So we hope by specifically listing it, it also just provides clarification that those development regulations are talking about car washes as an accessory use, and it's not like car wash got forgotten off of the permitted use list. And finally, one change we are making is we are adding retail sales limited to twenty-five percent of total gross floor area as a permitted accessory use. And this would be similar, if you've ever been to Southwest Specialty Foods, and they have that little retail shop, it's an industrial use. They do manufacturing, but they have a nice little retail shop. And we have been asked in the past by a few of our distribution centers and manufacturing, you know, could we have like a little outlet store for those, you know, scratch and dent kind of things? I've heard that the old Rubbermaid Building years ago, Rubbermaid had an outlet store. So again, sometimes it's been allowed in the past. What we're doing is expressly permitting it, so we're just making it clear. Things like those little outlet stores or company stores would actually be a benefit to the community, so we see that as something that would be beneficial. And then finally, the last thing we did was alphabetize the list so we could find things easier. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any question.
The one question I have is, how did you arrive at the twenty-five percent? Just curious.
That is...
Do you feel that's sufficient?
Thank you, Commissioner. We do feel that's sufficient. We've pulled that. There have been a few P E D zonings that have had that number, twenty-five percent. So we, we kind of used it from, you know, developers have proposed that to us. That seemed reasonable.
Okay. Any other questions for Katie?
So if, if an item is in I-one and they want to put it in I-two, is that allowed? If, you know, you're going to the more intensive?
Thank you, Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Barnes. It's been a long night. Our zoning ordinance, some zoning ordinances work that way, that the lower intensive use is automatically allowed and the higher intensive use. Our zoning ordinance is not like that, so everything in I-one isn't automatically permitted in I-two. We have to specifically list it in I-two if we want it to be allowed.
So I noticed that you have some items that are in both, like office, parking garage, and I wondered if that was exactly the case.
Yes.
So there's nothing else in I-two that you, like, some of the lighter stuff, like, I don't know. I'm gonna assume you have it all covered, and if something comes up, you're gonna come before the commission again and add it in?
That is correct. I will say, we did not add that retail store accessory in I-two. We only added that in I-one, thinking, again, we don't necessarily want to promote retail shopping in that heavier industrial district, but in light industrial, it's kind of an in-between use. It makes sense.
Makes sense, yeah. Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, thanks. Great job.
Oh, and I do like how you have similar uses as determined by the zoning administrator.
You betcha.
That's a good one.
A catch-all. I always have a catch-all. With that, I'll take a motion. Oh, wait, I'll close the public hearing unless we had someone that wants to speak. Nope, good. All right. Thank goodness. Motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission approve item seventeen-two-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-zero, the zoning ordinance text amendment on industrial uses.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Walter, seconded by Commissioner Steiner, to approve the zoning ordinance text amendment industrial uses. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, staff communication.
Happy New Year. I'm sorry, I didn't, I was, I neglected to go through the previous agenda to see what the council had acted on, but they were on break, so I don't think that, they haven't done a whole lot.
Perfect. Anything else?
How was that?
That's perfect.
I have an item for Steph.
Oh, I would, item?
I have an item for Steph, because I forgot last week.
Okay, go ahead.
Because we have not been here long enough, and I'm trying to get to the nine-zero-zero button. I have a request for staff, and I ran this by Chris and Katie before, but I wanted to request that staff research an issue and come back and present a report to this commission sometime later in the year, and that is the issue of autonomous motor vehicles and the effect that that's gonna have on city planning. And I'm only requesting this because I know how much fun it is for urban planners to look at this kind of stuff. But, no, I mean, from what I'm reading, our children or our grandchildren will never own cars, and everybody's just gonna have an Uber account, and some autonomous car's gonna come pick you up and drop you off somewhere, and if that's true, all of a sudden, we've got gobs of parking lot that we just don't need anymore. So I'm thinking, our city is the city that gets ahead of the issue and starts thinking about what would we do to change our, how we plan cities. So if you could look into that sometime over the rest of the year and present to the staff, I think it would be a lot of fun.
Yes, sir, we'd be happy to.
Any other staff communication?
Just one other really brief item. The American Planning Association, which is the professional organization that we are members of, and its professional affiliate certification program, the AICP, which many of us are affiliated with and have earned that certification. Anyway, the National Conference takes place every year. This year, it's in New Orleans, Louisiana.
Oh, it's a tough city to go to.
And as you've, as you've heard us talk about our process improvements over the course of the last year and a half or two years or so, you know, and as we've lauded the efforts of Katie and the team to really improve our processes and simplify, and just not for the sake of time savings, but for quality and, and managing loads and things of that nature. Anyway, the point is, is that we had proposed a session at both the state conference, which we presented to back in whenever that was, November, I think it was, but we also proposed to present a very similar session called Continuous Improvement in the Development Services Department, what that means and so forth. And so that session was accepted at, for the National Conference, so we'll be presenting to approximately eight thousand other planners throughout the country. So we're pretty excited about that. Not for ourselves, because we're not egotistical, but getting Goodyear on the, you know, Katie's saying yes, but it's putting good Goodyear on the map, because we really are leading the charge in this effort, and it's nice that our professional organization recognizes the effort that Katie and the team have made.
I commend you guys. You guys are doing awesome. I think we need to continue to push that envelope, and also, I have not seen that in the InFocus magazine, but I think that, I hope that someone highlights that, because I think that's a, a good spot to do that for our residents. With that being said, any other staff comments? I don't know if I even have the authority to do this, but you guys should, like, take the morning off tomorrow.
[laughing]
And call Steve and tell him, I don't know, I'll call whoever I need to.
Approve.
Sorry, you don't.
[laughing]
Thank you for the suggestion, but we're booked.
So with that, meeting adjourned.